Good evening. My name is Rita Hicks and I would like to welcome you to Conversations with the Candidates for At-Large City Council Position 5. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to say thank you so much for joining us for this conversation. Let me please introduce to you my co-host for this evening, Quentin Wiltz. I'd like to remind you that all of the candidates running for At-Large Position 5 were invited to join us tonight. The ones that you see appearing are the ones who took us up on our invitation. This is a live broadcast, but you can watch it again after the fact on either Houston Media Sources YouTube channel or the League of Women Voters of Houston's Vimeo channel. And for information about this race and the other races that are going to be on your ballot this November, be sure to check out our online voter guide at vote4womans.org. And for general information about what's going on with the elections this season, also check out houston.vote. Now, let me turn it over to Quentin to introduce our first guest for this evening.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Dr. Jack Christie is currently the City of Houston's At-Large Position 5 incumbent. He is a native Texan, businessman, chiropractic physician, and community leader. Jack's previous elected positions prior to arriving at Houston City Council include his three terms as State Board of Education board member and three terms in the Board of Trustees of Spring Branch Independent School District. Christie was elected president of Spring Branch ISD Board of Trustees and was appointed Chairman of Texas State Board of Education from 1995 to 2000. As a small business owner for over 30 years, Jack lends his expertise to the local business community through his position on the Board Directors for Spring Branch Memorial Chamber of Commerce. After being selected from a pool of nominees by the state's premier names in science, Dr. Jack Christie was inducted into the Texas Science Hall of Fame in 2000. He is an active member of St. Cecilia's Church and an Eagle Scout. Jack has been an avid runner for more than 40 years, competing and finishing marathons in the Ironman triathlon in Hawaii. Welcome, Dr.
Good. And I'm only 41 years old, too.
Quite an accomplishment in only four decades.
That's right.
So, to begin with, what we would like to hear from you, Jack, is when you are making policy for Houstonians, what are the three primary quality of life indicators that you consider when you're making decisions for the city?
Quality of life?
Right. Broadly, not just environmental quality of life, but in general.
Good, because I think quality of life is a balanced checkbook. I think if the finances are balanced, you can have a quality of life. Otherwise, we're going to be stressed for decades if we don't straighten that up. I think also, the quality of the air has been a priority of my terms on city council. I've been trying to get the city to switch over to natural gas on all their trucks. So, at every meeting, I vote against anything that says diesel. And I think with the price of gas low and the availability with the fracking and shale development, that we could switch everything to natural gas, have cleaner air, cheaper energy. When I first went on city council, we give the mayor, three years, a half a billion dollars for kilowatt hours. Can't we produce our own energy plants for half a billion dollars and take advantage for a 10-year contract for cheap natural gas? I've been a big proponent, and I rode with the mayor in the first B-cycle renting of city bikes to travel around this city. Traveled with her to many countries to see what they do with their quality of life issues and their environment. So, it's a priority. In my profession, I work on a quality internal environment in the body. And so, everything we can do, the parks and the trees and the trash pickup, the external environment, becomes very important to the citizens of Houston.
Thank you.
So, when you talk about quality of life, there's also another aspect, and so that aspect is law enforcement. And how can we improve law enforcement relationships with communities of color and the LGBT community?
I think we're doing it. One of the best picks, I think, that the Mayor Parker has made is the police chief. You don't see it on TV or the 10 o'clock news, but that police chief is in every community, town hall meetings, talking with community leaders of every color. And then he has training sessions for relationships with the citizens and the LGBT community. And I think it's working. If you watched him behind the scenes, you'd say, "That guy cares about our security, but it cares about the citizens' relationship with the police department." And as in other professions, I think we got 97% great people on the police force, the men and women, they're good. And in any profession, you're going to have 3% that they need to be fired, and he's not afraid to fire people. You know, and he doesn't look at color either. He fires the one that have broken the law. And I think he's a tough enforcer, but fair.
Okay. Thank you.
So, one of the things that has been in the spotlight lately has been public transit in Houston. So, I'm curious if you wouldn't mind sharing with us what your vision of public transportation in Houston is.
Well, we're behind the cue ball. I think it'll be multifaceted. I think roadway miles, rail, light rail, bicycles. And you know, one thing we have coming on that I bet you is a form of transportation in the future. We're tying in with the Bio Greenways project, nine different bios with the cooperation with the county and the city. And you watch, it's hike and bike trails now, and there'll be hundreds, a few hundred miles connected throughout the city. And I can foresee even the waterway, like in the woodlands that they were experimenting with, to be a mode of transportation. I talked to an individual today at a luncheon, took her an hour and 45 minutes to get from Katy to downtown. It's unacceptable. And if we don't have government money, we can't do more light rail. That's excellent for them. Every great city, and I've been to some of the largest cities in the world, they have a good rail system of some sort. So, it's got to be multifaceted, and getting more people out of the cars, we have to. It's just, it's unsustainable with the traffic patterns of today. So, I'd push every aspect of it, except more diesel trucks.
Well, so, the next thing we'd like to touch on is something that's been very prominent in the news, and that's the equal rights ordinance. And so, the question is two parts. Do you support it, the equal rights ordinance, and why or why not?
Very good question. Very first week that that came up, I made a statement. I'm not very verbose in every debate and such, but I said, "Mr. City Attorney, how many cases in large cities do we have on discrimination, especially in the transgender, but any discrimination?" He said, "About 10." And I said, "Do we need a 37-page ordinance for 10 cases?" And I said, right after that, it's word for word on there, "If you're a person of color and have trouble getting into a restaurant or a bar, call. We'll get you in, and we'll embarrass the establishment." I think the mayor would take the other two or three cases if they were transgender or such, and she could fight for them. I just don't think we needed a 37-page ordinance to do it. But still, I was torn. We had 357 presentations to the city, and there were some tear-jerking cases, I mean, to where it hurt to know that some of the citizens still discriminate. And in that initial week, I said, "This city really doesn't discriminate that much. And I'd never done a discriminatory action in my life, but if you enforce the law, you can stop those 10 cases." And so, I was torn in the middle, and I had words after weeks of debate. I had words written down why I was going to be in favor of it. One council member took the business exemptions from 50 to 25 to 15. Then I wrote words why I was going to vote against it. It was a tough call. It really was, because Houstonians just don't believe in discriminations. I really, truly believe that. But that 1% that does, I think we can stop them. When it took the business of having 15 exemptions, I mean, exemptions of 15 employees, that's saying, any small restaurant in this town has to have a lawyer almost on call. And then I read the section of the city attorney on describing what that proprietor had to think and say and observe to decide who goes in what bathroom. We don't need more lawyers in this. We can solve 10 cases without lawyers and low business exemption. 15, that's almost every business in this city, has to be looking over their shoulder on all these cases of discrimination. We don't need more lawsuits. We need to enforce and be decent to every human being in this city.
Thank you, sir. So, with the price of oil doing what it's doing, obviously, that's not good news for Houston. Many Houstonians are at risk of losing their jobs, thousands already have. So, I'm curious what your ideas are about policies and programs the city can be implementing in order to protect our economy?
It's a tough question. If I, I'd be Warren Buffett if I had all those answers. You know, the ups and downs of the oil market has been 12, 15 times in the past 50 years. So, it's inevitable. It's like the real estate market, you know? Do you shut down everything just because prices dropped temporarily? It will come back. With the population of the world, and China, and India, and Pakistan, with their population and raising their standard of living, there's going to be a tremendous need for hydrocarbons. So, it will come back. The beauty of it is this city and their leaders have taken it from an oil-gas city and diversified tremendously. We'll survive. You know, I've got a nephew out of work in the oil industry, but he's smart enough, he's got a double major, and he'll find a job some other way until it comes back, because this city has thrived. And again, when the mayor and I travel even to the Middle East, they look to this city for leadership and knowledge and experience in the oil and gas industry. We've got some good companies in this city, they're strong. You know, they'll survive this fairly easily because they're smart in their investments, and they've done a lot for the community. So, I'm a big fan of the large companies that we have here. They give back to the city, books of charity that they've done. So, it will survive. People may have to change jobs like they predicted 30 years ago, that you just adapt to a new industry, temporarily.
So, on to something, I guess, more specific and something that I guess you're familiar with, you're currently in the hot seat now, is term limits. That's going to be on the ballot. Do you support the three two-year terms, or perhaps a two-four-year or an alternate proposal, and why?
But they didn't take my alternate proposal. Yes, I think three-two-year terms, it was an overkill. And I knew the man, Mr. Climate Wright, that brought that in. And he rightfully, there was some dead wood in city government that needed to be, you know, improved upon. But I think it was an overkill to go three-two-year terms. There's been a proposal for two-four-year terms, it'll be on the ballot. I voted against it, not because I wouldn't want a few more years in office, but an amendment was added, just like the other one, that said that you could benefit from it January 1 on. So, sitting members could benefit. So, I was in favor of two-four-year terms until the amendment was put. It's a little self-serving, but I told the council member that presented that amendment, I said, "Listen, I'm going to vote against it. I'm sorry I'm going to do that, but I hope it passes because you are good for your district to go an additional two years." Here's my suggestion, and it didn't get out of committee, but three-two-year terms, you get a fourth term if you get 60% of the vote. You get a fifth term or forever if you get 70% of the vote. If you get 70% of vote in any election, you're doing a good job. So, that way, you keep the Eleanor Tinsley's, you keep the Judson Robinsons, you keep the Jim Greenwood's, the ones that deserve longer terms. Because now, we have short-sighted city council members and sometimes the mayor. I mean, China and Japan, they have 25, 50-year goals. We have two- to six-year goals. That's not right. So, I believe in longer limits, but I think if you earn it, you should have more than the six years.
So, we're shifting gears a little bit. You actually started this whole segment off talking about the city's pocketbook. So, certainly, one of the biggest hurdles right now facing Houston's pocketbook is unfunded pension liability. So, I'm curious if you wouldn't mind sharing with us what your ideas are for addressing the current situation, and what should we be doing to prevent ourselves from winding up in the same situation again years down the road?
Very good question. That should be the question in the mayor's race. Are you willing, and do you have the stature to stop away, stop the unsustainable pension system? Let me give you an example. And the greater Houston partnership and the taxpayers are mad because nobody else has a retirement system like some of the groups. So, the problem one, and they're great people, don't get me wrong, the men and women of the fire department are neat people and hardworking, but they got locked into, in 2001, giving away the ranch. We don't have the ranch to give away anymore. So, they got locked into it, put their lockbox in Austin. We either have to bring that lockbox back to Houston or negotiate, sit down and negotiate, which technically, they don't have to. So, the first six months in office, I asked the mayor, "Mayor, do you mind if I negotiate with them?" So, I had the firefighters, the pension board in my office, and their lobbyist, and just say, "Just give me a cost of living. Just give me a little bit of the guaranteed investments." And they really never had to negotiate. They were in a strong position. But now, with the business community and the taxpayers realizing, these are pension benefits that nobody else has. At one of the press conferences, the mayor, where she was suing somebody in the fire department, I hit a 30-year Exxon retiree. I said, "Do you have a pension like that?" "Not even close." Let me give you one example. It's the worst case that I could get out of the consultant. You're 52 years old, you just put in 30 years. I hand you a check for $750,000, and I guarantee you 147% of your highest salary in those 30 years for the rest of your life. We can't do that. And I love the firefighters and such, but they have to have their union to bring that down. Citizens can't afford it, city can't afford it. It'll be structurally imbalanced budget for decades if we don't. Look at Illinois's, you know? They can't afford what they're doing. They can't even pay their lottery winners. And Chicago is headed down, the state of Illinois, Detroit, and the mayor corrects me, says, "We're not Detroit." We will be if we stay on this course. We'll have to take money away from parks and libraries and streets. I mean, it's just, it's serious. So, it should be the number-one issue in the mayor's race. And the voters need to hold that promise accountable. "I'll fix it in two years. I'll fix it in three." If they don't, you shouldn't vote for them. It's that serious.
So, along the same lines of budgeting is, one part of the budget is infrastructure. Houston is one of the largest cities in the U.S., and tackling the infrastructure is going to be challenging. So, how do you think the city should tackle its infrastructure issues, and how are we going to pay for it?
Okay. I wasn't on city council when they put the drainage fee in. But in government, that's federal and city and state, we've got to start paying as you go. I mean, we're putting off debt, and the federal government's the worst at it, is just putting people in debt more and more. They say that we're $18 trillion in debt in federal government, but you add the responsibility of Medicare and Medicaid, which will bankrupt the federal government, it gets to $34 billion, trillion dollars in debt. You know, that's wrong for your kids and your grandkids. It's wrong. So, to have infrastructure paid as you go and paying down debt at the same, I think it's a good deal. Now, a few of my fiscal conservatives will slap me upside the head and say, "Christie, you know, wake up." But, you know, it's hard to pay off that credit card at the end of the month, all of it. You can't keep paying more and more interest. And China has you by the throat, Saudi Arabia, Japan, they have the debt that we have to pay off. So, you know, are they not in control of our future? And I'm thanking them for loaning the money, but we shouldn't be borrowing that much. You shouldn't have an imbalanced checkbook at home, and you shouldn't for the city. So, I'm in favor of the attempt that they're doing, and putting more and more money back in infrastructure. I think New York City has some water and sewer lines 90, 97 years old. You can't, you can't just live with 100 breaks every day on Wall Street. You know, it's, it's got to be done. And it's tough to ask the voters to be patient. You know, we've got 640 square miles in this city, and I think it's 6,000 or 8,000 lane miles of roads. We've got to have drainage with it. At sea level, you know, we have to invest in the future, but it's got to be smart investing, and not just more debt.
So, shifting gears a little bit, from sort of government spending to individual Houstonians, I'm curious whether you, we've seen this trend in some larger cities, I'm curious whether you support raising the minimum wage, and why or why not?
Well, these are good questions. I worked for minimum wage all through high school and college and was happy to get it. Of course, it's even less now. But when you think about someone trying to live, and forbid if they have a child or two and need to, you know, go to college, I hurt to where I couldn't make it on $7.25 an hour. I would probably be in favor, and again, my fiscal conservative buddies would slap me upside the head, but of graduating that up, not go $15 tomorrow. There are stats that you go to $15 and you're going to lose all these low pay, or a lot of these low pay, to where even the ones that are happy with minimum wage, they can be gone. And you'll, you'll lose, it'll be an economic catastrophe with small business that thrive on low wages. But so, I'd be somewhere in the middle, like, not going to $15 tomorrow, which sure, everybody would love to get $15. No, not me. I mean, but to graduate it up some to where it's reasonable, you know, just reasonable. I just, I always pay any high school that works in the office and such, just above the minimum wage, just because, you know, prom costs $1,000 nowadays, and they can't make it on $7.25 an hour.
So, Houston has a mayor-council form of government, and most of the power resides with the mayor. But given this form of government, how do you feel that you would be able to make a change if elected?
Well, there's disagreement on city council. You know, it's a strong mayor's position. And fortunately, we've been blessed with some good mayors that didn't abuse those positions. And so, I didn't see a problem with letting them continue setting the agenda and working the budget and such. We have a voice, but unless it's nine votes, we don't have veto power. Some of the council members want to have just a few people put things on the ballot, and out of 16 people, you're going to have some extremes. So, you just don't want to spend 18-hour days dealing with the discussions of the extremes. So, I like the status quo, and that's from a, I just think the better way to do it is you work with the power structure. You know, the mayor and I are from different parties, but we trust each other. And anything I've asked of her on a citizen's complaint or whatever, it gets done. And, you know, if you deal with respect and honesty and fairness, you know, those officials, the ones that I've known, the mayors in the past, you know, they want what's best for this city. It's not just a hand-to-hand combat politics and getting back at people. So, I work with the system the way it is, and I can get things done, working with the powerful mayor's position, than trying to skirt it and have coalitions to usurp the mayor's power. She was duly elected, and the previous mayor's duly elected, fair votes, and that's what the city wants. So, you work with the number-one spot. You can't be a city council member and say, "I'm bigger than the mayor." So, anyway, I like negotiation, compromise, trusting each other, and that's the pretty part of public service, but there's some ugly parts, too.
Well, Dr. Christie, I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're getting near the end of our time with you, so I would like to give you just a moment if you'd like to address the viewers who are watching at home and talk to them about why you want to stay a council member for At-Large 5 and why they should vote for you.
Okay. I just enjoy public service. I'm not too sure if I enjoy politics, but I knew that I could offer, just like the State Board of Education and the local school board, I have something to offer that's pure as far as serving the public. And in the city of Houston, I saw great challenges, and that's, again, balancing the budget, but working with Harris County. I think that was so important. They weren't working together, the city and the county. They're working together now. I think a cleaner environment, use of natural gas. Another area that the mayor put me on was the medical costs. We were $18 million in the red. Today, three and a half years later, we're at $37, 42 million in the black. And that's by teaching employees, I think it's 36, 37,000 employees and retirees, how to take care of themselves, that health is the entity, not disease. We had a disease care system, we're only halfway there. But just teaching what quitting smoking will do, exercising, eating right, you can prevent disease. I mean, all of them. And so, I like those challenges. I think more has to be done. But those, and then international. The mayor put me on the international scene to where we've been to maybe 17 countries, selling Houston, Port of Houston, the Medical Center, NASA, and the restaurants here. It's a good city. It's number one in a lot of areas, the energy industry, and we're selling it throughout the world, that this is the place to come if you want business, good business, and friendly people. That's why I'm running.
Well, again, thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you're watching at home, sit tight. We're going to take a quick break and be right back with our next guest. We're going to take a quick break and be right back with our next guest. Welcome back to our conversation with the candidates for At-Large Position Five. Let me turn it over to Quentin to introduce our next guest.
Welcome back. Brad Bateau is a small business owner and native Houstonian. He's a real estate investor and has been for the last 22 years buying and selling property all over Houston. His company is called Bateau Investments. With the help of a core group of volunteers, Brad works with seniors around the Third Ward area on a daily basis doing home repairs for them at no charge. Brad and his volunteer group have also been feeding the homeless for the past 18 years. He serves as a youth mentor in his community. It is extremely important for him to give back to the community and help in any way he can. Brad is an avid runner and has run several marathons and 10 triathlons. He will be running the Houston Marathon this January and this will be his eighth marathon. Brad received his high school diploma from Jack Yates High School in the Third Ward. And later on, he went to study at Texas Southern University, where he received a bachelor's in business management. He's lived in the Third Ward now, Midtown, his entire life. He's one daughter who is a student at Rice University and he attends church at Fountain of Praise Baptist Church. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. So we're going to jump right in. And my first question is a really broad one to give you a chance to talk to us a little bit. What I'm curious about is if you're an elected city council member and you're making policy for the city, what would you consider the three primary quality of life factors that you would consider in assessing a policy?
Well, first, what I would like to do is I would like to get with the people to find out exactly what the people want, because I'm a people person. And I think running for this race, I need, I need to know about our Houston citizens, what they want. But what I would like to do is I would like to go out and meet with more people. And I would like to better the city in different ways where we're short as far as, you know, streets and affordable housing and infrastructure.
Thank you.
So something that I guess is important all around Houston, and you said you in the Third Ward. How can we improve law enforcement relationships with communities of color and LGBT community?
Well, what I would do is I think we should get a special team, you know, to go out and aggress different, you know, crimes that are being done. And it's really not about color. A lot of people say it's the color, but it's the reactions of the person that's committing the crime. So I would say that, you know, I would get a crime unit together to go out and aggress the situation before a lot of people say that officer, you know, shot that person because they was black or they was white or they was Hispanic. I don't look at it like that. I look at it, it's the crime that the person that's committing at the time. And I feel that, you know, if we were sending someone out that can, that can deal with the person that committed the crime before the officer just snapped. A lot of officers have been snapping on the different people, you know. We've been having a lot of stuff going on lately, you know, where it's been unnecessary. And I think that if we have someone like a person that's to aggress it, you know, to meet the officer there in certain situations, I think that would be better. I always have two officers together. Maybe one is doing a police duty and the next one is there to aggress situations where other things won't happen. So I don't really think it's about color right now, but a little of it has to do with color.
So one of the things that we've been hearing a lot about lately in Houston is transit. We've seen Metro revision its bus lines, we're opening new light rail. But I'm curious what your vision is for public transportation in Houston?
I would say we need more light rail. I think light rail should spread all over the city, not just certain areas, all over. I mean, from here to the woodlands. If we could do that, if we can afford that with our budget. Right now, the traffic is getting worse and worse every day. Every time I'm on the traffic during, you know, the 5 o'clock traffic, it's always jammed up. And it's like right now, we need to come up with something like really fast. So, I mean, we need more light rail. I'm with what Metro is doing, they put more bus routes. I feel that we need more bus routes out there that will, you know, help us out with the rail and also with the transit of the city.
Okay, switching a little bit, as I know there was some new developments with mass transit. But something else that's been on a lot of Houstonians' minds is the Equal Rights Ordinance. So do you support it and why or why not?
Well, I don't, I thought about it a lot and I think it would cause a lot of problems. And right now, I don't support it. And the reason I don't support it, because I think that it's going to be some, you know, citizens out there that may use that in the wrong way. So I'm not agreeing with it and I gave it some thought. And I think that, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have that. I'm totally disagreeing with it. So those are my thoughts that I really gave it a lot of thought and I'm not for it at all.
Well, so I'm going to shift gears on you a little bit. Price of oil has not been nice to Houston lately. With the price down around $60 a barrel, a lot of Houstonians are worried about their jobs. Thousands of Houstonians have lost jobs. So I'm curious what policies and programs you think the city should be putting in place to protect our economy?
Well, for one, one of my goals, if I get in office, is, you know, more jobs. We need more jobs. I think we should have classes that way we can give more of our Houstonians opportunity to open up their own business. I know right now with the price of all, it's not good for us. And it's not just a few people laid off, it's like hundreds of people. And from me reading up on that, I'm not really happy with that at all. I think that, I'm thinking that I wish it was something that, you know, we could do in our city to prevent that, but right now, we can't.
Okay. So currently, the term limits on city council is going to be put on the ballot. And the current structure is three two-year term limits. Are you in favor of the current proposed term limit structure? Or would you propose another method? Or what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are I would stay with the three, two-year term limits. I mean, because for one, you know, we have a lot of councilmen and different, you know, mayors. Everybody had their different thoughts. And I feel that if we have someone that's not really helping the city, it do no good to just have that person just sitting there just wasting time and not really making better for the city. It's about the city. So I figure the more that people can really give another person a chance to be in office, that would really help us out instead of having someone just sit there for four long years.
Right. So one major challenge that the current city council and the incoming city council are going to have to deal with is unfunded pension liability. It's obviously a major financial issue for the city. I'm curious what your thoughts are about how the city should address the pension liability that exists now? And what steps should we take to prevent the same kind of situation from happening again in the future?
Good question. Well, now, I talked to a few people about the pension. And they, I mean, they really want the pension. And I feel that, you know, the pension would be good for those who qualify for it. I don't know if I'm really answering your question the way you're directing it to me, but, you know, from my knowledge, it's kind of, it's going to be kind of a little difficulty to better or say how the pension can be changed. Well, we've really been working on that and that's something that hasn't been totally addressed to happen. So right now, we only can do, you know, what we can do at this time. So I know it wasn't a good answer, but, you know, I gave it some thought and I read up on it a little bit and I talked to a lot of people about the pension. So not really happy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is going to be really important. How do you think the city should address the infrastructure issues? And how should we pay for it?
Well, right now, I mean, I know we're paying for them with the drainage fee. I don't know. I mean, a lot of people, you know, that I talk to around the city from meeting every day, all the time. I mean, they're not really happy with the drainage fee. They're not really happy with the taxes. And everybody's complaining about, you know, everything right now. But I think we need to budget our funds a little bit more in our city. That way, we can have more things that needs to be done for infrastructure to be done.
Right. So along the same kind of, we're talking, we're talking financial condition of the city. Let me shift gears a little bit and talk about individual Houstonians. We've seen a lot of major cities around the country move to raise the local minimum wage. So I'm curious whether you support raising the local minimum wage and why or why not?
Well, I support raising the minimum wage, not because when I worked many years ago, minimum wage couldn't really, I couldn't really afford anything. So now I feel that a lot of our youth that are working and a lot of people that are working for minimum wage aren't able to afford housing. So that's why we have a company that I've been working with for like 20 years, Housing Section 8. So we need those programs to make up for the amount of money that our citizens are working at this time. But my thing is I think they should raise minimum wage. That way, those who can't qualify for the food stamps can afford to buy food, clothing, pay all their bills. And I really depend on the government because we, from the program that I'm on, there's a lot of people on Section 8 housing. And I've been working with a lot of seniors as far as giving them affordable housing. Because right now, you know, I know the seniors don't really work, but they have fixed incomes for Social Security. But back to the minimum wage, I think that we should raise minimum wage. And I think we should give more people jobs out there because right now, we don't have enough jobs in Houston. And one of my things is when I get in office, I like to go out there and set programs up all over the city. That way, we can create more jobs for our city.
Thank you.
So that really leads, it's a good segue into the next question. Houston has a very strong mayoral council system. So the mayor has majority of the power in the system. So if elected, how would you go about making change in that sort of governmental system?
Well, what I would do is I'm hoping that when we get a new mayor, it's a mayor that's willing to work with the councilman and not just a mayor that's making all the decisions. Because the mayor, like you just said, have all the power. So what I would like to do is team up with the mayor that's willing to have the same ideas as what the mayor had, but at the same time, willing to accept the different challenges that a council member wants to offer for our city to make better for the city. I don't know, did I kind of answer that, you know?
No, it's just...
Okay, I just want to make sure. All right.
So when you're talking about a city as big as Houston is, with as many citizens in it as we have, communicating well with all of them is a really big challenge. I'm curious what your thoughts are on how the city can use technology to better communicate with citizens and also to better serve citizens?
Good question. Well, well, right now, I think we have a really good communication. I mean, as far as we could, we could use more of technology of communicating for the city. I mean, Houston is growing every, every single day. I mean, we have people, I see different cars and different cities and states that are moving here. And a lot of people are coming here because Houston is a great city. And that's one of the reasons that I'm running, because I want to better our city, because I love our city. And whatever it takes to make our city better, I'm willing to make that sacrifice for it.
So according to the Pew Research Center, Houston leads the country in economic segregation, with the affluent more likely to live among the affluent and the poor among the poor, with fewer Houston neighborhoods hosting middle-class households. Professor Killenberg has referred to residential economic segregation as one of our greatest challenges. What role can the city of Houston play in ensuring that there are thriving mixed-income, middle-class, and low-income neighborhoods in Houston?
So basically, you're, wait, just come back a little bit more. I'm trying to make sure I'm...
Sure, I can, I can kind of elaborate more. So the Pew Research Center says that Houston leads the country in economic segregation. So you have the people with more, who are more affluent living together and people who are poor living together and middle, middle-income living together. So how can we do more to balance it out or to, for lack of a better word, integrate and create more economic diversity amongst our community?
Okay. Well, let me see how I can answer this for you. Well, I mean, right now, we have a lot of citizens who, there's middle class and there's the ones that are, you know, that's not living as good as they want to live. You know, we have like a lot of, you know, poor people out there. And then we have a lot of homeless people out there. So what I feel that we have to get with the citizens of Houston and find out what will, what will make their households a lot better. You know, my thing is I'm all about the people. You know, I'm here to serve for the people. I mean, the people come to me and they ask me, you know, hey, if you get in office, will you do this for us, will you do that for us? My, I don't know if I'm answering that correctly, but my thing is I would get with the citizens of Houston and find out what would make that living for them better, better. That's my answer on that.
Okay.
Great. So you mentioned earlier, we have a lot of people coming to Houston right now. It's even with oil doing what it's doing, the area is a bit of an economic powerhouse with companies like Exxon and Nalco bringing their global headquarters to our area. But the thing is that they're building in Sugar Land or they're building in the woodlands, not in Houston proper. I'm curious if you have ideas what the city of Houston could be doing to try to attract some of that growth into the city rather than just in the outlying areas?
Well, I feel that instead of them having that growth in outland areas, that growth should really be all over the city, everywhere, not just the woodlands and the Sugar Land. I mean, you know, right now, I know that I go out to the woodlands, you know, not as much as I should because I have a few events out there that I do like maybe three or four times a year. But I noticed that the woodlands is a lot better than our city out here in Houston. And I feel that, you know, we should be able to have our city just as well as the woodlands or Sugar Land. So I feel that it shouldn't be in just one area, it should be in all areas.
So can I touch on something that you mentioned earlier? So can I touch on something that you mentioned earlier about crime and policing? When candidates sometimes speak of crime prevention, they say more cops, less crime, when in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, poverty, and opportunity. So what crime intervention and prevention policies do you support, do you support that will systematically address these issues?
Well, I feel that as far as crime, I mean, right now, a lot of crime is committed because we're not giving a lot of criminals that are coming out of the system jobs. So I feel that we need more policemen on the street, and I feel that the more police we have, the less crimes we have, because that way, we have more policemen that'll spread it out in different areas to prevent crime. But right now, the way the system is set up, is like, we're asking for crime, I mean, because a lot of programs that I attend, when I talk to different people that just, you know, got out of the system, they always talk about that they can't get a good job because of their record, they can't get an apartment because they have a felony. So right now, that brings our crime rate up a lot. So we, as more and more individuals that are coming out of jail and prison, we need more and more cops. And right now, policemen, we're losing some policemen, and we're gaining some. I feel that we need to come up with a better system with our policemen. So the main thing is, we need more policemen out, and I always agreed on the policeman on bicycles. I mean, that was one of my thoughts for many years, and I noticed that we have a few policemen that are out on bikes now, and that helps out a lot as far as crime. But it's going to be impossible right now to prevent a lot of crime because of the way the system is set up for a lot of criminals that are coming out. So it's like, we're almost asking for whatever happens at that time when a crime is committed. So, and a lot of that has to do with, you know, we need to make some changes, and what I would do is, I would make changes in the city to give, you know, some of the ones that are coming out, they want a better life, everybody deserves a second chance in life. So my thing is, if we can prevent that, then we will have less crime and a better city at the same time, because right now, we're losing a lot of lives with a lot of crimes that are going on right now. And I'm not really happy about that, because no one should lose their life because a person is trying to take something that they work hard for. And all you get, you know, when I go to those programs and talk to the ex-cons and the ones that are coming out of jail, you know, they're saying that, hey, well, they're not giving us a chance. So a person that comes out, they're, hey, they're looking to go back in, so it's like, they have to do whatever they have to do to live, which is not right, I don't agree with that at all. But that's why we need more and more policemen on the street, where we can prevent a lot of crime that's going on right now.
Okay.
So we have time for one more question, and I want to talk about diversity in the city. Houston is known as the country's most diverse city. I'm curious what you think that the city should be doing to capitalize on the diversity that we have here?
Good question. Well, I think that Houston should capitalize more on diversity. What, I mean, I want to, you know, answer this question, is, you know, where you can really understand what I'm trying to say, but diversity in this city, what can, like, tell me that a little bit, what you was asking about the diversity of the city?
So the question was just, it's an extremely diverse city, and how can the city leverage that in order to make the city better?
Well, I don't really, I don't really know how we can leverage that right now. So, I mean, I don't want to answer that in the wrong way, but I feel that, you know, we have a good city, and diversity is everywhere, so not just in Houston, but I feel eventually that diversity will work out, you know, the way it should, not just in Houston, but everywhere.
I want to thank you so much for taking the time to join us tonight, and we have just about a minute left, and so I wanted to give you the opportunity to address our viewers who might be watching at home, tell them why you're running, and why you think they should vote for you.
Okay, well, the reason I'm running for city council is I want to help better our city, and for one, I love our city. I'd like for the city of Houston to know that I'm a person that reaches out to everyone in the city, and my thing is, I would want our citizens to, you know, to let me know what would better the city, not just what I want, it's about what Houston wants. And I'm going to continue to work hard to get in office where I can better the streets and keep affordable housing, and keep the senior citizens happy with a lot of things that they can't do on their own, because, you know, once you get older, you get in a way where you can't do a lot for yourself, and you don't already have anyone that you can call to help you out, so, and then, you know, a lot of seniors are kind of by their self, and they trying to live the rest of their life to make things better in their life. But also, more after-school programs, I'm going to continue to work on, you know, better the transit, you know, just, I like to keep on making our Houston a better Houston, which we already have a wonderful city, we just need to make it a little bit better.
Well, again, thank you so much for joining us. As you who are watching at home know, we've been live, but we will also have this video available on the Houston Media Source YouTube channel, and also the League of Women Voters of Houston's Vimeo channel. I also want to remind you that you can find more information about this and all the other races that will be on your ballot in November at the League of Women Voters Voter Guide website, which is vote411.org, and you can visit houston.vote for more general information about what's going on this election season. On behalf of myself, Rita Hicks, and my co-host Quinton Wiltz, and the League of Women Voters of Houston Education Fund, I want to thank you for watching, have a good night.